It is now 3:25 and a quorum of the board is present. We are reconvening. First of all, I just want to thank all three of the candidates that came today. They took their time out of their busy schedules to come for these second interviews and we really appreciate their willingness to do that and the great dialogue that we were able to have with them today. I also want to introduce, we have Rain Associates with us. Mike Collins is here and he is going to kind of talk through some of the process on our final selection for the candidate. So with that...
Thank you. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be back. I really just want to start with my sincere compliments and the compliments of our colleagues out of the home office as well. What you did from the time we shared suggested questions and the questions you carved out for yourselves and how you did such a nice job of making that really Michigan question is fairly exemplary compared to a lot that we've seen in many places, to the point that we may begin to lift some of those ideas for other places. You know, but in all sincerity, we looked at those and we had it on one of our weekly calls because we saw them, you know, when you saw them. And it was, they're very good. I also want to remind you and everyone else here that the thing I also found extremely interesting, having participated in all those community or constituent conversations, the things you put in those questions were very consistent of the type of questions, comments, or concerns that were raised throughout those 32 different conversations, or 32 conversations with the 32 different entities, because I think we had 24 conversations because we had more than one group represented occasionally. So they were also very reflective of what we heard as far back as January. So I just think it's been a great capture of consensus of where things are and what are you paying attention to. And those things are very consistent with many aspects of the field. So congratulations. So this is why you all ran for office, so you could do this one day. So I had shared, and you have them, kind of five suggested steps, if you will, or at least guidelines, as you go through this final selection process. And I'm going to very quickly review those and then ask if there are questions and making sure there's consensus to follow that, or some facsimile thereof. And then let's roll up our sleeves and get to it. So number one is you all have, you all have a copy of what we call Matrix. And we're going to, I'm going to get to the instructions for that in a minute after I go through these five points. But it is much simpler than it looks. And it's really a forced prioritization of one candidate against another. It's not any more complicated than that. And we'll talk about the specifics in just a second. Once you're done individually with those, I'm going to collect them and I'm going to actually tally them. And from that point, we can do one of two things. I can just hold the tally for a while and you can begin your conversation to build consensus and discuss your thoughts on all three candidates. Or I can share the results upfront and you can use that as a starting point of your conversation. In reality, we've never seen it used as based on those, there was no conversation, just this Matrix tally was who was selected. It's to give you just another back step or forward step reference point to what you've said individually and what does that add up to. And it's a little different than what you've done in the past where you ranked them one through five, or whatever. This actually is forcing you to look at one against the other, period. That's the purpose of it. So you'll tell me, so it's your choice. And as I shared with Cassandra just a few minutes ago, I've done about 16 of these. And there is 16 different school boards. Some just want to hold the tally, we want to talk, and we'll go back and use it as a reference point. Some want to know, give us the tally first and we'll talk from there. So it's completely up to you and I can't tell you there was 10 one way and six another. It really depends on the makeup and the feelings of the group, or maybe the feelings of the group at that time. So it's your call. Following that, the completion of the Matrix and my tally, you then tell me whether you want to hear it right away or you want to sit for a bit and use it as a reference point later. But then, one way or another, to have you all begin to engage in conversation. There's a point in here that I kind of skipped a four. No, I moved right to three and one time I think I had it as four. How you conduct that conversation is totally yours. I just think it is extremely helpful and productive for you to consider, let this one suggestion guide the conversation, and that is talk, speak to much more around what you feel, which one, or not necessarily which one, but of each of them, why you feel they're a good fit, as opposed to, here's what they didn't do, here's what they didn't say. We always find that one may be a better fit than the other and that could be your guiding point. But I don't think there's a lot to be gained by just kind of, you know, public critical conversation. It doesn't always have to be positive, but it probably needs to be, it would be helpful if it's in a direction that talks about which one or which ones do you think are the best fit for this job. And I'm asking you to use that as part of a guide to your conversation. And then moving to a decision, either one candidate raises, you know, moves ahead in your collective perspective, or maybe two move ahead of one, and then you go back and talk about the remaining two. That's all fair game. But hopefully there will be a decision. It's, you know, obviously it's the best for whoever you select that is close to unanimous as possible, but you're a state board and that's a very hard thing to find. It's much, I can tell you one personally from experience, but in my experience of working with other boards, both state and local, is you have the percentage of finding a 5-0 vote compared to an 8-0 vote, or how many members there are on the state board, it's much more, it's more of a rarity to find a unanimous vote on the state board than it is on a city or a local board. So I don't think it's always about everybody has to do it if you don't feel that way. If you do, hallelujah. But the fact of the matter is, is that at some point, you're going to need to make a decision. So I'm not telling you anything you don't know and haven't already thought about. I fully appreciate that. So with that, let's just take a couple of minutes. There are only three. So the way this is designed is for you, because we have one and two, and then one and three first, and then we have two and three. What we're really asking in one and two, one over top of two, not that one's better than two, but in your mind, would you rather have Michael Rice or Randy Leepa? Period. That's all that's being asked in that one item. Circle the one you want of those two. Then you ask, then the next one is one to three. You prefer Michael over Janice or Janice over Michael? Circle it. And then the last one is very obvious, it's Randy and Janice. That's all you need to do. I'm going to collect them. You can start talking. I'm going to tally them. So there'll be some sense of a tally and somebody will finish first, second, and third in the Matrix. But that by no means needs to be your, it needs to be reflective of your final decision. It's a reference point for you.
So are we putting our names on these or are you just...
When I collect them, I'm just going to put your initials on them. We're going to keep it. All right, now put your initials in a corner. That'll be, that's helpful.
I would think these are public.
They will be public.
Yeah, I want to make sure that...
Right, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that's fine. I guess in this case, yeah, you can put your name.
Yes.
Thank you, Tom. I appreciate that.
That was the way I asked.
No, good question. Thanks, Pamela. Okay. I bet.
So we just make three circles?
Correct.
Not three circles?
Yeah, you might need to explain it again. So one versus two...
Which one do you want? Circle the one you want.
And Rice is one, Leepa is two, and Swift is three.
Correct. It's in the order down the left-hand side.
So out of, this one would be out of Rice, Michael or Randy, you pick either, you circle either one or two.
And then these two, like this total three circles.
Correct.
Got it.
Wow. Put your name on a paper and do the three.
Is there any reason why we don't do this publicly and just say it?
It's easier for me to tally them off the sheets, to be honest with you. If you want to say them, you can say them.
And another question, why don't we discuss and even do this after that? Why are we doing it before?
You don't have to do it before if you don't want to. The only reason was, is we did it and if I collect them, then you can start your conversation and decide when you want the reference point. It's up to you.
To Tom's point, I'm okay with discussing after you tally or while you tally, but to Tom's point, we could call out our...
That's fine. Yeah.
Yeah, not that I don't, not that I don't trust your abilities, but I guess I don't know your math abilities.
No, I'm not good. I'm going to take them to Maryland and double check anyway, so rest assured.
How'd she do on the umstep?
He's from Ohio. Oh, he's from Ohio. Oh, never mind.
Yeah, no. I didn't go to Ohio State.
So you start, Tom.
So is everyone done with this?
But he got all the circles. I don't understand if I'm doing it right.
Yeah, no, you wouldn't circle, for each group you would circle one. So either this one you circle...
For each group, I circle one?
Right. Yeah, so you're either going to circle Michael or Randy on the first one.
Well, that's not specified.
Okay.
And all I really need to know, I'm going to start with Judy, just because I wrote your names down going around the table that way, if that's okay with you, Cassandra?
Is that okay with Judy? It's okay with me.
But I'm not going first. No, I can see.
You're really, you're really going to tell me how many circles you gave each one. That's what I'm looking for.
Oh, now you've counted.
No, no, you got it. You got them.
Okay, I got it.
Okay.
Whenever everybody's done.
Yeah.
I don't think everybody's done. I'm the guinea pig. Okay, I got it.
Okay, are we done now? Are you, is that, okay.
I understood it.
How many circles did you give Michael?
Two.
And how many circles did you give Randy?
None.
Okay. And therefore Janice got one.
Correct.
Okay. Lupe, how many circles did you give Michael?
None.
Okay. How many circles did you give Randy?
Two.
Okay. Therefore, Janice got the other one?
She got a one.
Okay. Thank you. Tom?
Zero, two, and one.
Michael Rice, two. Randy, one, and zero.
Okay. Pamela?
I have two, zero, and one.
I have two for Rice, one for Randy.
Zero, two, one.
Fifty?
Two for Rice and one for Randy.
Do we want to know the tally now and then discuss?
Well, since we kind of had the general idea anyway.
Yeah, well, it's pretty clear, it's summer surface. So Janice received five, Randy received nine, Michael received 10, if I just total up the numbers across the way.
Okay. And nine, five.
Correct. Going the other way, correct, Pamela.
So, based on this, if I'm understanding, I don't think Janice received any ones, correct?
She wasn't, she was not selected, she didn't receive any twos.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, that's what I meant.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, she didn't receive any of the twos.
Correct.
So based on that, are we comfortable eliminating that candidate and then having conversation about the other two? Everybody comfortable with that?
I selected Janice and I am comfortable with that.
Okay.
I just would like to say that I did appreciate some of her ideas.
Right.
I thought she was, you know, she had, she brought a lot of great energy. I don't want it to be seen that she wasn't a great candidate. My concern was, I wanted somebody with more of a variety of experiences. I'm concerned about the extrapolating what you can do in Ann Arbor to the rest of the state. I think that variance outside of Ann Arbor in the state, or with more challenge, like some really challenging communities, I think is important, so.
Obviously, I liked that she liked Young Jau. But I liked her honesty. Throughout the whole process, I think she was just a very sincere and honest person. I really liked, you know, much of what she said and disagree with some things, but I think, yeah, I mean, I think she was a good candidate to come before us.
I really appreciated her interview today especially. I liked what she honed in on question number two, though. I do agree with Michelle around her experience with the variety of districts, but really her being able to talk about what she's doing to close the achievement gaps and the fact that she talked about, you know, closing one of the biggest gaps that we know of and talking about expulsions and things like that. I liked what she talked about around early literacy as a public health crisis. I liked the fact that she talked about the growing teachers from within and that she had a real life experience to talk about that. And you could tell her passion around that. So I did appreciate what she brought to us and I think that we should be honored that she thought of Michigan students and us to come before us and put herself out there like that to apply.
Something about special education that I thought was really good, she talked about early identification, delivering services consistently and without interruption, which many people know that does not happen. And what's required to make it happen is an incredible effort on a parent's behalf. So just to hear that come from her mouth was comforting. How closely are we monitoring the outcome of our interventions? I think oftentimes it's hard to figure out how to do that with kids that have those needs. So, but she identified it more succinctly than, I think she kind of came out front in that particular area, so nice to hear that.
Yeah. That's cool.
Her response to question number 12 and her comments about connectedness were good also as far as the state superintendent being that individual who does need to be the connector, and how she took that seriously and understood that that would be an important part of the role.
And I have to say that it was an honor to meet the Superintendent Swift from Ann Arbor because I had heard a lot about her. She did get the Superintendent of the Year. So her presentation today was extremely very passionate. She had, she is working in her district towards many different initiatives that are extremely important to our state and they have been enumerated by my colleagues already. So it was an honor to meet her and it was an honor to have her as one of the candidates for this process.
I felt like she was very knowledgeable and I really appreciated her positive energy. She had a lot of great points. I think that my concern is the same that Michelle shared with the diversity. I'm not sure, you know, her lens is going to be different. And one thing she said in particular that stood out to that point was when she talked about parent choices, parents having a lot of choices. And in some communities, parents don't feel like they have a lot of choices and you have to recognize that.
Great comments. Thank you. Okay, so now, and then there were two. So I think we need to open it up to a conversation. For those of you who chose Michael Rice as number one, you know, if you can express why you thought he was the top choice, and those of you who thought that Randy Leepa was number one, why you thought he was the top choice. And we will, you know, rather than going around the table, if you want to comment, let's just do our normal, you know, jumping in back and forth. Does that sound like a good process?
Although can we talk about both and good things about both?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. But at the end of the day, obviously, we have to choose one, so if you could, you know, share if you have a preference, one over the other, I think that would be helpful. Would anyone like to go first?
I can start. One of the things that was said to us at the beginning of this process was that we are selecting the best fit for the position of state superintendent in the state of Michigan. And so with that being the lead line, I have to say that in my mind and what I have seen and heard and listened to, Randy is the right fit for this time in the state of Michigan. He has a proven record of leadership. What I love about his, I can see zooting out that people, he's a people person. He is a person that brings people to the table and they work on projects and they come with solutions. And it's in, that's why I asked him at the end, you know, tell me more about your collaborative style, because to me, Randy is collaborative, Mr. Collaborative. And what I have heard from people that have worked with him, Michelle included at this table, was that they work very closely together, that he was able to bring people together and make decisions for different projects. To me, that speaks volumes because as a state superintendent, that is one of the main things that this person has to have, be a collaborative leader and be a leader that's going to bring people together. I think in this position, you have to eat a lot of humble pie and be able to collaborate with many different educational minds. And so Randy is doing that already. He's doing it, he did it as a superintendent, now as Wayne Risa Superintendent. And he is also doing it with the legislature and the governor's office and many educational stakeholders throughout the state. He's already working with the department. He's ready to fit into the position. And again, I say, he is the right fit at this time to be the state superintendent for the state of Michigan.
I want to comment on both, just sort of side by side, for some of the questions that we asked today. I shouldn't do all the ones I've circled, but I think three and 11 were pretty key when we talked about what to do about the enrollment decline. There were some differences in the answers, even though there were positives on both sides. I feel like what I heard more from Michael was continue to educate. But then we heard a lot of really good ideas, specific ideas, on how to tackle enrollment decline and address it as we move forward, which I think is a pretty big deal. And so I feel like as a state superintendent, knowing that this is one of our biggest issues and it's a long projected issue, he brought really specific solutions to the table today.
Did you say he or for...
I'm sorry, Randy.
Randy, okay.
Brought really specific solutions to the table today that it sounds like he's already even addressed in Wayne Risa and the districts that he's been a superintendent. So I thought that was pretty significant in comparison to the other candidates. And then question 11, when we tackled special education, I thought this was, you know, and this could be talked out, but I still feel like it was something to take note of when we talked about how do we address the appeals process? And what we heard from Michael is that it should be broken into three tiers. And this is just a sidestep from my perspective as a parent with a child with a disability, having dealt with institutional difficulty in accessing services and healthcare. But when you make a process within a system so difficult to access and long and arduous, you just, you're asking for the parents to burn out of energy pretty quickly. So I feel like when he said three tiers, it just felt like by the time you get to the top, you're dead. And then you hear no again. So how is that helpful in creating better outcomes when we're at the bottom? And then I heard from Randy, you know, he said, we need to streamline it. We need to make the process shorter and more accessible. So that's, I guess that's what I would want to hear as a parent from a special education student and a child with a disability, is I want you to come in and tighten this process up so that I can go ahead and spend a whole lot less time burning myself out as a parent and become, you know, have more energy and effort just to love on my kids. So I feel like there were really significant differences in their responses to that one question. And then also you hear from a lot of special education advocates that, you know, we all talk about appreciating local control on a number of levels, but sometimes local control in this particular situation, when you, when Michael said bring it back to, you know, the locals, let them hash it out, it's like, it can be a bloody battle when you're hashing those types of things out. So you need advocates in that area. And I know that you probably understand the things I'm saying, but still, I felt like those answers were pretty significantly different and I appreciated what Randy had to say. And then other positive things, just not side by side, answers to the questions that I thought Randy brought to the table. When he talked about student loan debt, I just wanted to kind of jump on the table and start like, yay, good job! Because that's, I mean, really where we need to be. We need to be talking about how we're going to decrease student loan debt and especially for educators. And he was the first and foremost person to discuss that when you want people to become educators, you don't want them to go into their profession with more debt than they can even financially manage. So that was really helpful. It sounds like he already has ideas and I failed to ask that question at the end, but that's what I have for now.
I'll say that to start with Mr. Rice, I didn't have any votes for him, but I did, there were many things I liked about what he said as far as, I agree with him, we're burning through a lot of money on overhead. I don't want to consolidate because I think that districts, I don't want to be an advocate for trying to push that, and I don't think he was either, but because I think there's still local control issues, the more there's consolidation, the less parents are closer to the decision makers. But I do like that he's talking about that, especially from an administrator, saying that there's too much overhead in the system because I think we need more money in the classroom. I was glad that he made it very clear he opposes the retention, third grade retention. He was very supportive of parents and opting out. And, you know, I liked the idea of being concerned about technology and typing issues and just that, you know, that maybe testing on computers is not the be all, the end all and that there needs to be options. And I think he's right that there, sometimes it's really testing typing skills and access to technology and it's not about what the kids know necessarily. So I, there were certainly things that I liked. Randy, though, is the one that I gave my vote, more of my votes to. He spent 12 minutes or 13 minutes on number two, which is a lot of time, but I really recognized that, to be honest with you, I mean, I've, when I was in the legislature, I spoke to a lot of, you know, leaders, district leaders, and in the affluent districts, they pretty much said, I just want the state to leave us alone. We're doing fine, we're doing well, we got things we're doing, we just want to, it's the areas that, you know, it's the reason why I want the partnership, I push for partnership schools to be always in front of us at every meeting, at the monthly. I think those are the areas that we focus on. I think those are the areas that we focus on as a state. And it should be to help, not to make their issues more problematic, but to help. And I really think Randy, because of his expertise or his experience at the local and at the ISD, really can appreciate what a state could do without interfering in those districts that are struggling. He mentioned the audits, which I worked with Ellen Lipton and worked on, you know, ISD kind of going in and helping audit and helping schools that want it. And he was clear, if they don't want it, that's fine. But, you know, and really helping understand where they are. And so, I think that background of knowing the local or knowing how to not interfere, but to help those that are struggling. Quite frankly, I'm not sure when we talk, there are struggling, but I still am not sure when we talk about achievement gaps, if it's all test-based. I'm not sure I, how much of gaps they are, if it's all test-based that we measure those. He also talked about incentives. It was really important on the CTE. He talked about the incentives that need to get right because, you know, if a district loses money because a kid goes to a place where the child wants to go, that the wrong incentives are there. I mean, the perversion of incentives, I've found when I was in the legislature, is one of the worst things that goes on in government. And to get those right is key. It's why I worked so hard on indigent defense, civil asset forfeiture, all things that I crossed over the aisle and worked on more Democrat, with a lot of Dems, was because it's all about incentives. And so, I appreciate that he understands and will work on getting the incentives right. And if the incentives are wrong, the system is going to be wrong. He was strong on the parental rights, which I really appreciated. And so, yeah, I mean, for these and other areas, I just, I think he's the right person. I, that's why I'm supporting him.
Sure. First of all, I thought all three candidates did a wonderful job today. And any candidate's going to have strengths and possibly areas where maybe they didn't answer the question as fully as we would have wanted to. And each one of us, I know, is going to have our own kind of things that we're looking at. One of the main things that I was looking for as I listened to responders was specific discussion about the achievement gaps, specific ways in which the individual had made a difference or was making a difference. The leader, it's not one person that can do any of that. As many of you know, I was a superintendent for six years. So, I understand that it takes the team and some things that the leader, that they have to set the pace. They have to set the tone. And I believe that Dr. Rice is doing that in Kalamazoo and would do that here at Michigan Department of Education. His response to his first question was very thorough. He had nine different points of things that he had thought about, that he felt as though state of Michigan needed to begin to look at and work on in order to make systemic change across the board. He talked about early childhood. He talked about CTE. He talked about all of those things that we have discussions around this table about all the time. So, I was very impressed with that response. His, the response to the second question, we were looking for, or the question asked about what source of policies and what success had he had. And so, he went through some of the data and the successes that they're seeing in Kalamazoo. Again, they're not where they need to be or where they want to be. I was especially impressed with his discussion about AP courses. I was also a high school teacher. And many times, in many high schools, unfortunately, and I think it's still the case, students are, you know, identified, "Oh, you're AP" because they got an A in math last year or whatever. And I think the tone and the approach is different. And again, you have to look to the leadership. And you have to say, is that tone being set by the leadership at that point? When he started talking about, he understands, I think, the collaboration. I know he understands collaboration. He talked about instruction. He brought in Reading Now, which I know Kalamazoo has now become part of. They weren't one of the early adopters. He understands that the impact is going to be in the classroom with high-quality teachers and will support that. I believe he said during his interview, he has worked with the union in Kalamazoo and they currently are at $40,000 compensation for their Step 1 teachers or their new teachers coming in, which is at least the highest in that area. I don't know statewide whether it is or not. His experience of being a teacher, even as a superintendent, the fact that I had also been a teacher were things that I was able to rely on. To think back about, you know, decisions that are being made, how is that going to affect the classroom? This, obviously, in this position, is a much bigger scale. But I believe that that experience will be extremely helpful for anyone who is going to sit in the seat. There's multi-state experience also and multi-role experience. He's been a teacher, a director of finance, and superintendent. So, there's kind of that, you know, overall experience level. I think we all know, and we're all frustrated with it, that unfortunately, Michigan Department of Education does not sit down with a blank slate and able to set their own budget. That, for the most part, I'm looking at Sheila, but I think I'm correct on this. The budget is kind of given to the department and then hopefully, the superintendent and the staff are able to talk about their priorities and work with the legislature at that point. Finance is important, there's no question about it. But to have that sense of instruction, have that finance background and the multi-state background to be able to look at the big picture, I think is important. I think that was something Janice Dr. Swift had also, though it was just in Colorado. I know all of the candidates hold themselves to high standards. I appreciated that in all three of them. But in Dr. Rice's case, he holds himself to the same standard that he holds others to, or that's at least what I heard in many of his responses. So, again, at this point in Michigan's history, where we are so very concerned about our achievement gaps, those questions, one and two, I think, were very important questions. They were all important, but to me, from my perspective, were extremely important questions. I felt as though Dr. Rice has the plan and would be able to come in here and execute that plan with the talent that is already here within the Michigan Department of Ed.
I'd like to go next.
Yeah, and there's things I liked a lot about both. And this is not an easy decision. But I, at this point, I am leaning towards Michael Rice. And some of the reasons why is because he, the things that were, that have been articulated. But also because he seems to have an ability to really identify the core of a problem and then have solutions. And he has a track record of actually getting the stuff done. Of, he doesn't just say, "How do?" He would close the achievement gap. He's closing, you know, he's doing stuff that is actually effective and working. So, that, to me, was really impressive. So, his ability to have this sort of like critical thinking, which maybe people don't want to hear sometimes and might take that as offensive or whatever. I take it as courageous and having the leadership to voice these things, even though they may not be popular or might be seen as criticisms of someone else's position. But I think it's what we need, someone who has that that level of focus and to identify the problems and do something about them and just sort of move forward and getting it done. So, I liked that whole thing about him. What I loved about Randy was his focus on the classroom, his idea of having time for teachers to collaborate, really making sure that it's, you know, I think that's really, he brought up, he was, he brought up for achievement gaps, to lower the class sizes for where you need to have it and put your strongest leadership. I just thought that was spot on. I thought that was great answer. And I, I think that makes a lot of sense. So, they, you know, they both have some really good ideas. They both have, you know, very thoughtful and have worked really hard in the field for a long time and have a variety of experiences. I do like the fact that Michael has out-of-state experiences in different areas as well. I like the fact that he has regular meetings with teachers and students. And it sounds like with business community and parents, he's just, he seems to really listen. I do understand your concern with the tiered thing, with the special ed, you know, if it was going to prolong the process. I understand though, sometimes, well, in my job, sometimes your best solutions are at the local level. And when you take it to a complaint, it takes longer. And if you had just started at the bottom, sometimes it's the best. But sometimes, you can't do that. Sometimes you don't have a district that's willing to work with you. And you need to have the ability to do that. But I did like the fact that he clearly said he supported the parents' rights to appeal the decision before they have to go to the more complicated lawyer, you know, due process hearings. And that they give it one more shot to try to make sure the information's on the table and reach a resolution. I think that was important. So, that's in general where I'm leaning and why.
Go ahead. I'm still writing notes.
Okay. Oh, I was, I was just going to say that I am leaning towards Michael Rice. I thought Randy did a very good job. I think he particularly, to your point, Nikki, hit it out of the park with question number three. When I wrote this question, I didn't realize that people would see it as, what does the state economy need to look like to bring people back into the state? That wasn't the intention of my question, but I now realize that that's how people saw it. But I think he actually saw it the way I intended it. So, he answered it the way I thought someone would answer it. So, I did like that. But I'm leaning more towards Michael Rice for many of the reasons that both Michelle and, sorry, Judy, mentioned. One, I thought his answer to question number one was really in-depth. And that tells me that he really took the time to think through that very, very, very important question. I also, I do like the fact that he has experience outside of the state of Michigan. I think if we're going to turn around Michigan, you know, we need to start bringing some ideas from outside of, you know, we can't just be homegrown all the time. We do need to have some people who have some different experiences. And so, I really like the fact that he brings that to the table. So, I just think that ultimately, I think that he had some very, very good ideas and expressed himself very well and brings unique experience. So, that's where I am.
You want me to go?
Still writing?
Go ahead. I mean, you want me to go? Okay. So, Randy Leepa. Again, I think that we had three strong candidates today. Just want to say, oh, to Brenda Casillas, I think that, you know, we should congratulate Boston on getting an awesome pick there. But going to Randy, I really, I was impressed by his answer to question number 10. And that was around the implementing technologies and making sure that, we do use technology, but making sure that teachers are adequately trained, making sure that technology does not replace teachers. But that we learn how to make sure that we utilize technology in an appropriate way. There were many things that I could say about Randy. I think that many of you all have already pointed to his strong suits and the things that he brought to the table today. I want to just transition to Dr. Rice. And so, some of the things that I've been just writing as you all have been talking. One of the questions that I asked, and I might have used the wrong word because I might have misquoted him because I said that, he said the last time he was pushy. As I went through my notes, he might have used a different word. But I'll just, I think he got the sentiment of what I was saying. And I think that, as all of us have been hearing different things from different people, we've been getting different calls. Some of the people that I have heard from are the people who have worked with each of the individuals that we're talking about now. And one of them, for me, was an educator. And they talked about how there had been disagreements, but at the end of the day, they have all had the same goal in mind. And that's to educate children, making sure that children are at the forefront of what they're doing and how Dr. Rice has pushed, he pushes to get things, urgent issues, addressed. And we've seen that. I remember when the 38 school districts were going through, or 38 schools, a few years ago, before the partnership model came into place, I remember him showing up at the legislature and being very courageous and speaking very boldly and helping all of us in that way to keep those 38 school districts alive that now is the partnership model. Other critical issues that he really understands and came across today was around the teacher shortage. That's a real issue in these districts. The other thing that we know is we have good teachers who are passionate, they know what to do, they know how to, they are quality teachers. They know what to do for their students. But we can't hope away that that's an issue. It is a reality that teachers are having to teach to a test still. You know, no matter what transitions we're making now, we still have teachers where, Tom, where students are being starved of their ability to be creative. Because, and they're not, they're at the expense of programs and things that are going to help them to express that creativity and grow that creativity. We have teachers that are still having, are under the threat of closure if they don't get their assessment scores above. And I think, and I know, and it has been expressed here as well as talking to others and seeing him be passionate about these before this position even came about, that he understands that, that the need to address this whole teaching to the test, the whole assessment issue that we all talk about all the time at this table. I think his question around the A through F question, he has not conceded. You know, I think that he still has some fight there where he wants to go to the legislature and figure this thing out, you know? And that he knows that the system, that we work so hard with Brian at the helm and that he feels that that's a good system and that that's a system that needs to be in these dueling systems, that that's a system that has been much more thought out than what has been proposed through legislature. And so, I appreciated that. I've seen, I've watched him build a team. Not to mention, he has a lot of people from Saginaw on his team. But, so, I've seen him get good, talented folks on his team. I liked his question around choice. That he said, yes, parents should have choice, but within districts. You know, making sure that we build up our public education systems within districts so parents can choose. Then his response to achievement gap, that he's not just looking at trends that are in comparison to the state, but looking at those, looking at the sub-populations, making sure that as we're talking about improvement, that no sub-population is left behind. And understanding those sub-populations, those populations so that we, those racial, ethnic, socioeconomic, English language learners or our special education students, but making sure that no one is being left behind as we look to improve education. And so, I mean, just again, I'll just, I'll just end with this. His thoughts on the path forward, to me, were clear. I think that in addition to just being an idea- I think that in addition to just being ideas, that he had put these things into practice and it's, and it was quite evident in, in what he said here. And Judy, as you said, is Kalamazoo perfect? No. But we do know that he has evidence, not only here, and as you said, Michelle, out, out of state as well as in Michigan, where he can show practice of a path forward. So my choice is Dr. Rice.
Tiffany?
Well, as one of the newest board members, first I want to thank Ray and Associates for helping us with this process. And, and our interim soup for answering questions as I've come to you about the process and our, and my board members for you all being open and honest and transparent. This is not an easy process at all because you have to think about children first. And then you have to think about stakeholders and, and the constituents and what everybody wants and MDE as well. Because this person is going to lead them. So it's a lot of, a lot of weight. But I feel better today than I did the last time we were at this table. I really appreciate the deeper dive and getting to, to hear more from the candidates. I think that Randy did a better job this time of conveying some of his talents. It's obvious that he has connections. I've gotten a lot of calls and texts and emails about everybody, but more so him. And I've gotten pros and cons, you know, about everybody. I liked his ability to, for collaborations and bridge building. I think that's, that's awesome. And it's obvious that he's done a lot of that in Wayne County. And I think Wayne County is a good snapshot of the state. I think that it has the urban, rural suburbs, the impoverished areas, the wealthy areas. He really seems to understand and have a grasp on lobbying. I like the fact that he got the mileage passed. It's really hard for me because both of them, I felt like brought a lot to the table today. But I do feel like I'm leaning towards Michael Rice. I do like, as Judy stated, which I, I noticed as well, he has the multi-state experience and I think that's important. He has the local grasp of the state. And then he also has innovative ideas to bring in from out of state. So I thought that was important and impressive. I think he understands diverse communities as well. I think some of the things that he said was very, he was very innovative. And he also passed the mileage in, for special education. I thought that the three-tiered system for me was more so not red tape, but more so respect of letting the local communities deal with it first. And if they can't handle it, then it goes up. So I actually like that approach. And then question number one, which you pointed out stood out to me as well. Randy brought up about teachers working together and making sure that they were qualified and well-trained and definitely like that. And he brought, he brought to the table the Ontario model, which was very good. And he referenced again the top 10 and 10 policy opportunities. I like the fact that Michael Rice brought actually nine different ways. He brought a lot with that, greater investment in public education. He concentrated on ECE and the fact that we need three-year-olds in the classroom and full-day opportunities. He also brought up relationships and collaborations between business and education. It was a lot. So both of them had very strong qualities. But I, I'm going to lean towards Michael Rice.
So if I have counted this correctly?
And, and I will say, my one concern with him was kind of his references to the east side of the state. And I want to make sure that, you know, if he is selected, that he has good working relationships with everyone, strong relationships.
So based on my calculations, as of now, it looks like we have five for Michael and three for Randy. So are there other comments that anyone would like to make?
I do.
Yes.
I would be very reminiscent if I don't say what I, the people told me about Dr. Rice's style, leadership style. And this comment came from superintendents all over the state. It came from leadership within Kalamazoo. It came in from my community, Hispanic community from Kalamazoo. It came from community at large from Kalamazoo. And, and so I have, I, you know, whatever happens, I want to get this off my chest because what they're saying about his leadership style is very, very important to the, who's the right fit for the, the state superintendent. And some of the things that they were told, and also by teachers, that's very important. A lot of teachers called me. Now, one of the things, I want to start with the teachers. The teachers informed me that they went on a black strike demonstration and, and because they didn't have a contract. And so they all wore black. They met at Miller Auditorium, which is at Western Michigan University. And it was a silent march. They all went to the balcony and, and, and he was speaking in the front. So they were all wearing black, very silent, listening to him in the balcony. And then, so then at the end of the, it didn't, it didn't finish. He, he, he didn't finish. He asked everybody to go to their buildings. Okay, that's one. Another, another teacher told me that he is a, a lie into the chain of command, that he is first in command and he's the last one in command. In other words, he's got all the command. Another comment that was made by teachers is that he has cultivated a climate of fear within the school district. Another comment that the teachers told me was that, yes, he has monthly meetings with parents, students, teachers, et cetera. But he speaks 95% of the time. And that when they come out with what is, because I think the objective is to find out what's not happening in the school district and how can they improve it together. But he does 90 whatever percent of the talking and they never do get where they hopefully collectively were gonna get. And so at the end of the day, it's his chain of command. He is the first one and the last one. Another thing that they said, that he controls the conversation. So there's, therefore he is the, the voice that's going to be heard. He, he's, he is the one that drives what the conversation is gonna be and what the solutions are gonna be. They told me that collaboration is not truly in practice. It's in writing, it's in his presentations. But in essence, collaboration does not occur with everybody in the system. They told me that he can only speak to the school board. His top management are not allowed to speak to their school board. And, 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 and so that is what happens with the school board. They, they have told me over and over again that if he becomes the state superintendent, they're going to start having a big street party because they're gonna be very happy that he's going to leave. So these are the comments that I've been hearing from many different people. And it's just not one person, it's not one group, it's many groups. And so the superintendents work real closely with each other. And so they have told me, more than one superintendent, many from my side of the state, you know, I'm from Grand Rapids, many from that side of the state and, and some from the east side of the state. So they, they also collaborate that he not-
Okay. I found this on the web for presentation, putting Essie's collaboration does not-
Does not occur that, that the conversation is, he wants to control. He's a, a, a control freak. He's a, a micro manager. A, a building cannot have a field trip without him saying, yes, they could go on a field trip. And, and so there's said many more comments, but these are the ones that came to mind and I wrote down. Now, whatever happens, I got this off my chest. And I think it's important that, that you hear, you would hear what everybody has told.
I feel like that's a bunch of hearsay that should have been brought up well ahead of time. And if you had those questions, you should have been clear about them. I'm feeling incredibly angry that you would slander this man's name and talk about this. I asked you for the people who's saying this. You gave me one person to contact. I have contacted several people, including teacher organizations. They have all said he is a good candidate and they support him being the state superintendent. So I'm getting information completely different from you. And I am saying, I know, but that's why they call it hearsay. And, and so I think, I just think that it is wrong to go on and on with rumoring and to say these things without him giving, having him have an opportunity to have a rebuttal. So I'm sure you feel better.
I, I asked the question.
I don't, well, you did not go on and on about your concerns as you did just now. And I think it's sour grapes. I, I think it is unfair and unwarranted. Like I said, I've talked to the different organizations who he's working with. I have heard nothing but supportive things. I've asked you for the contacts. I got one person that you've talked to. That's all I've got. So I don't know who I called and who did ever called me back. So I, I just think that we should look at what he's accomplished. We should look at his credentials. We should look at him in the light that we have seen him and in the people that we have had an opportunity to vet and talk to. And not secondhand information from somebody who is anonymous. I, I, I don't think that that's fair.
I'll just say that I, Lupe, I did speak with, I received a phone call from someone who was a colleague of Dr. Rice, who was a former superintendent. And they sang his praises. As I mentioned earlier, I've, I've gotten a call from, from a couple of educators that work in his system now. I've gotten word from other people who have sent word to me who, who work within his school district. But the educator that I, one of them that I, that I will say that I spoke with emphasized that, have we always seen eye to eye? No, but at the end of the day, we've worked things out. And him, we, they strongly recommended, they sought me out to strongly recommend this person. They are, to Dr. Rice. They also mentioned that it would be a huge, it's going to be a huge loss. Their, their, their only one regret is that it's going to be a huge loss for that school district if he was selected.
Nikki and then Tiffany.
So just, and this might be like taking it off track too, just because it's now coming to mind after a question we asked Dr. Swift.
Dr. Swift?
We did, yeah. And this is not pertaining to her, but it's pertaining to Dr. Rice. And I've tried, like I, I, throughout this process, I really tried to just focus on the qualifications of each candidate as a state superintendent versus, you know, building upon their local experience, but then also, you know, not attaching everything that follows them. But there is a case that, that followed Dr. Rice, which had to do with sexual assault with a principal that was in that school. And I do feel like, seems like we've already made our decision, but I just, you say at the end of the day, he's willing to work with us. It concerns me how much, obviously I appreciate teachers, but it concerns me how much we're, we're like talking about only them in this situation because I think there's just, and I'm not saying only them as if we're not talking about kids or- but there are situations that follow each one of the candidates. We have not talked about that with Dr. Rice. And I just hope that if we do choose him, that some of the issues that have happened in his past, that we will, we'll deal with that. This particular case was at the Loy Norix High School where his initial reaction to sexual assault with this particular principal was that it didn't happen or that it didn't follow him, but it happened in a couple of other states, or in Alabama before it came to Michigan. So anyhow, I'm just hoping, hoping that in the end, that we can continue to work together on even that level too. Because I, I just, just thought of it now after we had, you said you should have asked that question. And we did ask that to Dr. Swift. I didn't bring that up in his interview because I was just hoping to work together in the end on a process where we will look out for the safety and security of all students and consider the whole equation, the full conversation. In this particular situation, there was an article in WWMT West Michigan where he mentions that there's nothing founding that behind this educator. And then a couple of days later, there actually is. And he says it's the process that they followed that they didn't find that information when they hired that principal. So just to this point, that we would develop processes that-
Well, that was pretty disturbing. But I was gonna say that I, I've heard pros and cons on everybody. Some of the cons were really bad for everybody. I'm concerned now though about that, what Nikki just brought up.
Michelle has, yeah. To clarify, I read the article, listened to the newscast. They hired a principal from out of state who was accused of sexual harassment. He wasn't convicted or, and it sounded to me from reading, from looking at it, that they didn't even, that the case may, the suit might not even have been filed when they hired him. And he, and so he, there was no way for them to know that there was a sexual harassment, not assault, harassment case. And, and, and then they, they put him on administrative leave. They, he took full responsibility for fixing the process. He said, you know, they have to look at when they look out of state, they have to do a more thorough process. He took, and he took responsibility for it. So it, so it was an allegation of sexual harassment against a principal they hired from out of state. And I don't know if he was, whatever happened to the suit, but-
So, yeah, can you elaborate anymore?
I'll give you what we know. And honestly, we, and what happens is when we bring you the 10 or 12, the ones that, that kind of surfaced in the first round, we have what we call reviewers. So the only thing we, that came up from a reviewer who happened to explore it was that, was that, it's basically what Michelle has described. That they hired a person and then it came to light. They put him on leave so that they, they could go check it out. There were never charges filed and there was never, you know, I mean, it never matriculate, matriculated to anything else in Alabama.
Not, not to interrupt you, but his teaching certificate was disciplined in three different states. So maybe it wasn't a conviction, but that is something to consider.
Okay, we didn't see that, not on the principal.
So this is in the local newspaper?
Nikki, I have full respect for that. I'm just telling you, it was when we just looked into that specific incident and that's where we stopped because it was about the teacher or the principal. That, that is what we found. I mean, we found it and nothing occurred and there was a piece about- I mean, we found it and nothing occurred and there was a piece about that he took responsibility. I, I don't have any more information than that, but once there was no reason to do any, you know, I mean, that it didn't occur, that we, we, we left it alone. Anything else that we've heard? So, the only thing I'll say on all three of them is that we asked the question of all those constituent groups, is there anybody you would like to recommend? It doesn't have to be them, it could be anybody and numerous, numerous names, many of whom probably wouldn't qualify, in all honesty. Some do. All three of them, their names surfaced in a positive light. We do ask the question and this, and keep in mind, these are the groups that are the associations of educators as well as all the other community groups, business groups. I mean, there, as I said before, I think there were 24 groups and 32 people. But we didn't get any negatives from any of the three, is what I'm talking, because we asked the second question. Is there anybody that, and, and don't tell us, just write it on a piece of paper. We, we don't ask anybody to make that public. Is there anybody that you think shouldn't, you know, or that you would have reservations about? And none of those three surfaced in, in any of those cases. And I'm not trying to justify anything, I'm just giving you another piece of data. I thought we shared this with you when we were going through to pick out the five anyway, but-
So, I, was it right?
No, we talked about facts last time.
I mean, they're right here, they're right here. You can look at them.
That's really-
They're on the local Kalamazoo website. And again, I, I wasn't bringing them to the table today, but then somebody did ask a question about Dr. Swift. And then you mentioned that and I thought, I feel like, I feel like I should do the same thing and just make sure that we're clear. And, you know, to hire somebody whose teaching certificate has been, you know, disciplined or suspended in three other states, you know, even if you do take responsibility, I just want to make sure that, that there's a decision that as we move forward, that the next state superintendent, especially being a state superintendent of the state of Michigan with MSU and the situations that we have, is ready and prepared to tackle the issues of this particular issue.
So, as a new board member, because I don't know the answer to this, and it is something that I've wondered about because, you know, this is a big process and us picking somebody. What if that person does not work out? What is the process for that? Shouldn't that happen?
We, we offer-
We have evaluation.
Yeah, you have evaluation.
Are you, are you, can I just, are you saying what if they turn down the job? Or are you saying? Oh, okay.
What, what if?
Yeah, so, so they have a contract, but we have the ability to do what we need to do as a board. And we do do annual evaluations of the superintendent.
And if I may add one other thing, there's a, there's a clause in your agreement with Ray and Associates, that if this doesn't work out within the first two years, if you want us to, we would do a follow-up search for free. The, the two things that, that we promise, you know, I mean, extra, that's not asked, that's not typically asked for. One is that and every one that, that we do. And then the other is that we come back and actually have conversations with the candidate and the board president a year from now just to assess it. And if there's anything you want us to talk about with them or there's certain things that you want us to do, we offer that as well.
So, I just want to say to Lupe's comments, you know, I think we've all heard a lot of different stuff. I've not heard any of the things that you mentioned. And I will also point out that, you know, Dr. Rice was named the Michigan Superintendent of the Year by the Michigan Association of Superintendents and Administrators. And correct me if I'm wrong, but don't they self-select their, their Superintendent of the Year? So, I think that's a, a good benchmark that, of what other superintendents feel about him. Are there other questions, comments that board members-
Well, actually, I've been involved with the selection of the Superintendent of the Year and it's, it is not just superintendents, it's other people. There's a group of people throughout the state that they hire. I mean, they don't hire, they ask us to serve.
Okay. Any other comments? So, I'm going to ask, has anyone changed their vote?
We probably ought to formally vote.
Oh, no, 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 no. This is before we do a motion. Because our motion has to say, this is the person we're moving forward. So, I want to make sure we know who that is. So, you know, we were at 5-3. So, the question is, has anyone changed their mind about who their top candidate is?
Let me just go around and say who the top candidate, just everybody say a name.
Excuse me, and what is, what is this at the bottom for?
That's for him to calculate.
That was it. Already did it.
Not for us to do anything with.
No, no.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Pam, do you want to?
You want to? I would, I would just recommend a roll call. Or no?
We're not, we're not officially voting yet.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, I have another question.
Yeah.
About this little box down here. So, so when we, okay, so Michael Rice. And then people say what number they want or what?
No, you already did that.
Lupe, that's, that's not for the board, that's for him.
Oh, that's not for us.
Not for you. That's how we came up with the pin nine.
Technically, we're supposed to just have this.
You don't need to use that anymore. Right.
Okay.
Sure, Michael, Dr. Michael Rice. Dr. Rice? Michael Rice?
Dr. Rice? Dr. Lepia?
Randy?
Dr. Rice. So, we are still at 5-3. We entertain a motion at this point?
I move that we extend a contract to Dr. Michael Rice to be the next Michigan State Superintendent of Schools.
And hold on, I'm going to add to that and authorize the board president to work towards successful negotiation of final contract.
Yeah, all of that.
It's been moved and supported. Do we need a roll call?
I would think so, discussion. I mean, I'm only voting, I'm fine with the decision. I'm just going to vote no because I wanted the other person. So, it's not because I, you know, that's, that would be the only reason I would vote no.
So, if I may paraphrase, just so that we're clear, you're, you're voting no because you want, you wanted, you wanted Randy not because you're voting no on Michael. Is that what you're trying to say? I just, I just wanted to clarify.
That would be accurate.
I would echo that and just to be clear, you know, on the whole, that I hope that we work together well with, with Michael and everybody puts kids first.
Marilyn, will you call the roll, please?
Fecto?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Ramos Montini?
No.
Snyder?
No.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
5-3.
Okay, so the motion carries. Are there any further last-minute comments by board members, keeping in mind you are holding us all up?
I would, I would like to say, I think you did a very good job, Madam President.
Yes, thank you.
For the whole thing.
Cassandra.
And I'll just say, great job. Again, cannot say enough about the candidates and the process, the grueling process and then what they have to go through and their name being put out there. And so, I hope that their home districts, those who were not selected, know what treasure they, they have.
Right. Yeah, very well.
You're here, I completely agree with that. And thank you once again to the candidates who put themselves forward and, and did this not only for themselves, but because they believe so strongly in education and the kids in the state of Michigan.
Cassandra, if I may, just real quick, I know I'm holding you up, so.
That's okay.
No, I just want to say on behalf of Ray and Associates, as I commented about the respect and the professionalism you all exhibit in your working together, we've seen less than that on other occasions, but is, you know, much to be applauded. And, and yes, you had a really, really outstanding pool. And I think the other thing that this showed you is how close all four of them were.
Yes.
So, though, Brenda may be heading, heading to the northeast, obviously, it wasn't as if Randy Lepa was, you know, a poor choice. So, you, to have four like that, and we'll take one compliment that we did our job, we did not make your life easy and that is our job. But I want to compliment you all and I want to thank you for the opportunity to do this and particularly for the opportunity to do it two times in a row. That, that's, you know, very heartfelt, so thank you very much. And to Marilyn, who had, you know, put up, put up with us on one side. Very much.
Thank you.
And though, and though she did it very quietly and very infrequently, Sheila was a great guidepost for certain things as well.
And, and let's, let's also thank Sheila for stepping into this role.
Oh, yeah, my goodness.
Yeah. Future meeting dates, Tuesday, May 14th is the regular board meeting, Wednesday, May 22nd is the board retreat and Tuesday, June 11th is the regular board meeting. And with that-